It's taken so long to paint.
Ask maintenance man, don't ask me.
Another thing is the outside wall, what they did to the outside wall.
They're not finished with the outside wall either.
That's been over three weeks. Three weeks they've been working on that and the paint, the paint, where they painted the white is all over the lettering.
They're going to repaint the lettering.
They're not done yet, it's been three weeks.
We finished already, we finished the problem today, okay? And the back wall and the side is not done yet, we have to finish. We no painting, it was raining, we no came painting when it's wet. I'm gonna let it dry.
We have an umbrella.
We have one more question, yes.
With regards to the air conditioning, I noticed that the Zurich building's air conditioning leaking now. How come that was not included in the manager?
Was it reported to the office? It wasn't in my, it wasn't in my report because I didn't know that it was leaking.
We sent somebody there this morning.
We reported to the air conditioning guy go upstairs, the unit is not good, they put it off now, they go to the air.
They were working on that today, this morning. Regardless of. Okay, regardless of whether it's on, if it is an emergency, which it sounds like it is obviously, it will be taken care of and then we'll ratify it at the next meeting anyway.
We have, we have to find the leaking, excuse me, we have to find the leaking over there, we have two problems. It's looking, I'm trying, it's not easy to find the leak. The trying is maybe the air conditioning is leaking, we, the unit is not.
Destroying the wood, it's destroying the wood.
Yep.
The plywood and it's also destroying the brand new carpet.
It's gonna be taken care of.
But it's been going on for over a month.
I work in that.
Okay, we're working on that, correct? Okay, good. Yes, Mary.
I think Dan needs to be on the property a little bit more than he has to be aware of what's going on.
I agree.
He doesn't know anything unless we tell him.
I agree.
He should be on the property seeing things that he can be done and writing things down himself. Why is he relying on only us to tell him? He doesn't even, he's not even aware of what's going on. Why? He's supposed to be a property manager, what is his, what is his job description? Sit in the office all day?
I second that.
Dan, could we do like maybe a weekly tour perhaps and, you know, with George or whoever? Soon as you, soon as you prove that golf cart, I'll be out every day. Okay, that's the, that's the number sixteen on the agenda, alright.
There's a lady here.
On the agenda, on the agenda, yeah. Okay, yeah. Oh, sorry.
Okay. Saint Moritz, the second floor, the carpet is need stretching. It's ultimately.
You cannot stretch those carpets, they are glued, they are, through the concrete, there is no pad underneath. I've had the carpet company come out, the only way that those carpets can be repaired, they have to cut it all the way down the hall, up the middle of the carpet and then re-glue it.
I don't know what you have to do, it's not even safe. We can trip on them, they are bulging and I cannot walk.
It's on all floors, all the floors.
Remember I fell once? And they came up and they did something, if it happens again, I, yeah.
I will call the guy, when I, when, after the holiday and have him come out and give me a price to cut the carpet and re-glue it. I'll go into every building.
We have, we have four buildings like that.
It's not the new, the more recently carpeted buildings, the ones like since the last few years since we've done the board. Those were installed correctly, it's the older ones that were installed back in twenty fourteen.
So why can't they come and fix it? We take money for it, right?
That was, that was the previous board, so I don't even.
It's new, it's two years.
Again, I will, I will have them come out, give me, I will have them come out, give me a price, but I'm telling you the way it has to be done, it's not, they cannot stretch the carpets because those carpets are glued directly to the concrete. They have to cut the carpet and then they have to try to pull it towards the middle and then re-glue it. I will speak to them and I will get, I will get several companies to come out and look at the problem. We'll follow up on that, next item is sales and leasing report.
Can I ask you something, are we gonna talk about the budget?
The budget is the next meeting.
No, 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 I want to talk about it now.
It's the next meeting.
It's the next meeting.
Excuse, wait a second Carl, you spoke up first, I want to talk about it now. I mean, there are things in here.
No, 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 you can't talk about it, we have an agenda, it is nine thirty, we need to go.
We need, we do need to. Marcy, could you, could you submit everything in writing so that when we have the meeting, we can address all the, all the points that you have, but we, we, yeah, we do have a meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
We do have a meeting in two weeks.
Okay. This is for November. Y three L was purchased, two bedroom, seventy-three thousand five hundred was approved. Y two H purchased, two bedroom, one oh eight thousand, that was canceled. G three Y purchased, one bedroom, sixty-five thousand three hundred approved. I two J purchased, two bedroom, one hundred and twelve thousand approved. H two S purchased, one bedroom, fifty-seven thousand approved. I three F purchased, one bedroom, sixty-five thousand approved. H three B purchased, one bedroom, fifty-nine nine approved. H three Y purchased, one bedroom, sixty-five approved. I three R leased efficiency, thirteen hundred approved. Nine one Q leased, one bedroom, nine fifty approved. Z one L leased, two bedroom, thirteen hundred approved. O two G leased, one bedroom, nine fifty approved. M two U leased, one bedroom, thousand approved. B two V leased, two bedroom, twelve hundred approved. Z three C leased, one bedroom, nine fifty approved. H three P rollover, four bedroom, fourteen fifty approved. Y three Q rollover, one bedroom, eight fifty approved. N one D rollover, one bedroom, nine hundred approved. E three E rollover, two bedroom, one thousand sixty-five approved. I three K rollover, one bedroom, nine seventy-five approved. I three X rollover, two bedroom, thirteen twenty-five denied. S one Z rollover, two bedroom, fifteen hundred approved. I two R rollover, efficiency, nine hundred approved. B one I rollover, one bedroom, nine fifty approved. Y one T rollover, two two D, one thousand one twenty-five approved. Z three W rollover, two bedroom, twelve fifty approved. N three C rollover, one bedroom, eight ninety-five approved. N one U rollover, one bedroom, nine seventy-five approved.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the actions taken by the sales and leasing for the month of October and to approve the report. Do we have a motion to approve? Lewis made the motion on the sales and lease. Do we have a second? I'll second.
I got a question.
Oh, wait, wait, before, before we get to that, I mean, Lewis or, okay, Marah seconded it, good, alright. Okay, before we get to the audience, is there any discussion on the board first? Okay, hearing that, Dan.
Dan, what's the percentage of renters in here?
Percentage of renters?
I think it's about sixty-five.
About fifty.
Yeah, it's about fifty percent. That's all fifty percent, I would say sixty. We've had quite a, over the past couple of months, we've had quite a number of purchases.
Rent, okay, because I found out from a loan officer just a couple of days ago that if it's fifty-one percent, they will not be given mortgages in here. So, we need to be really worried as owners going over, because if we want to sell our property, unless you have cash buyers, you won't get your place.
We've had a few people that have gotten loans.
Yes.
We've gotten a few.
I mean, if it, if it, we gotta, if it's fifty percent, we gotta keep it there. We have to get it from lenders or they're getting from private lenders.
Okay, the, the only way that you can, the only way that you could put a cap on the number of renters, because of the way your documents read right now, is you have to change your documents. There is no cap on it and for you to put something in like that that would affect the entire community, that would actually be an amendment to your documents.
We should really change that.
There should be a cap.
They should change, I thought there was a cap on it, I didn't even know it was the law.
Okay, yeah, that was actually done back in twenty, if I remember correctly, it was twenty eleven or twenty twelve.
But I thought you guys changed it.
No, you're thinking of, you're thinking of the, so the year weight.
It should go to two years, that should go to two years.
Okay, we actually didn't do, we actually didn't change anything. What happened was when the, when the year weight was suspended, it was for a one-year or two-year timeframe and it was moratorium for about two years, I believe it was, and then it automatically came back into effect. So the board actually didn't take any action on that and as far as changing the docs to put back in a cap, it's kind of, we, we've already, I mean, that's, we've already crossed that bridge unfortunately.
But how do they?
And it was, it was a bad decision at the time and it was done, it would, the, the. Yeah.
Whoever buys apartments going forward can't rent their apartments, that's number one. And number two, the ones that, that have apartments that are rentals, can't re-rent them.
Okay, again, that would require a change in the docs.
Exactly. As, as owners, each of their, the one need to be concerned about is if we put our property up and sell and we can't sell it, we're trapped, we can't sell. If we have to sell and move on.
Well, I don't know about that, you, you can still, you can still sell.
That was the second thing you said.
Yeah.
That, if you, if the second, if you, people have, if you have a rental, you have your apartment as a rental, when that person moves out. You don't have, you don't, you can't re-rent it.
For how long?
Okay?
One year.
No, if you change the docs, if you change it, now you can.
Oh, okay.
Now you can re-rent it, but if you change, if you have the board change the docs, you can't re-rent it.
Yeah.
You have to live in the harm, which is what we, some of the owners would like. For that people, like all the investors that we have, they would have to get people to actually buy the apartments where they would have to live in the harm. Exactly.
Okay, again, that, that would be quite challenging because it's actually a change, it would be a change in the declaration of condo, not just in the bylaws, the bylaws require a simple majority of a quorum.
I thought we already had it where we, where the new owners that are coming in can't rent for one year.
For one year, no, she, I think she's talking about permanent, you're talking about permanent.
Permanently, yeah.
Yeah, but that, yeah, that would require.
So, so what, so what we have in place now is a temporary amendment?
No, 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 what we have in place now is permanent, what we had before was a temporary moratorium.
So permanent, any new buyer, exactly, any new buyer, they have to.
Ask to wait a year.
Wait a year.
Right.
And we can increase that for two years.
We, we, we could if we changed the docs again and make it two years. But that would be a declaration of condo amendment and that, that has a higher threshold for approval. For the bylaws, it's a simple majority of a quorum, which is one-third of the membership, so technically you could get a bylaws member with only fifty percent, but for declarations, you need fifty percent of the entire membership.
Why would that affect people that are already owners here at the ten fifteen years? Why would that affect them? It wouldn't affect them, how could it?
I don't understand.
It wouldn't affect them, correct?
Well, it only affects whoever's buying.
Exactly. Yeah, affects the new owners.
But it will still require the vote, that's the thing. So, anyway, that's a discussion for another day unfortunately, but the next item.
Security.
No, sorry, there's a motion and a second, we need, we need to vote, is there any objection to the sales and lease report? Hearing that, it's approved. Nobody, nobody objected, okay, next item is security managers' report.
Good evening folks. Long and short, we took our monthly report from October twentieth to November twentieth. We had sixteen police reports, which means police came on the property sixteen times between those dates, October twentieth and November twentieth. We had total fire rescue reports of eleven. Two tow reports and for John's auspices, at this point, for total unit key updates, we've had three, which brings us down to only a hundred, I believe approximately a hundred and twenty-seven units left to get keys for.
Why were the police here?
Okay, the keys, the keys, remember, that's for the AT&amp;T Fiber Optic to be able to complete that project. Because they, they work during the day, yeah.
Austin, why were the police, Austin, why were the police here?
What, alright?
Eleven fire rescues.
The fire or the police reports. Tuesday, ten seventeen, Lauderdale Police made a routine patrol of the community. Wednesday, ten eighteen, Renner Monique DeGrio of thirty-six seventy Bordeaux two H called the police in response to her fiance, Renner Giovanni Velalobos having some argument with her.
This is a little bit too much, we don't need everybody, everybody's name and all that stuff.
Okay. So, for the week of October sixteen through October twenty-second, we had four reports. For the week of October twenty-third through October twenty-ninth, we had three reports.
I, I don't think people are really concerned about the number, I think they, they want to know the nature and kind of in general, don't give us details of specific ones, like in general.
Okay, we've had no burglaries. We've had one incident of a vandalism, which happened the week of November first and that was back here behind Marseille. Would it involve, we think that somebody may have come over the bridge onto the property because that's where it was located, was in that corner. It happened between seven to ten o'clock at night. The resident from Marseille came, checked out the car, there was no anything taken, just a smashed end window. We have a case number on that, the police are in control of that. We also had a car on November first that was taken. Obviously, we don't know how it happened or what happened, police are in control of that. The car in question was taken back into custody by the owner less than ten days ago and is getting repaired, was found in Pembroke Pockets.
Wait a minute, wait, 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 a car was physically taken off of the premises?
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody came in and took a car?
Yes, ma'am. We don't know if the owner left the doors open, whatnot. Could have left their doors unlocked and someone came over, took the car.
Was that enough, a new car, was that the new car?
Second.
Was that the new car that was taken?
Uh, no ma'am.
There was somebody that had a new car, somebody drove in with two people, took the car and drove out.
Do we have cameras or anything in the scene?
Ma'am, the cameras at the gatehouse are so degraded that even if we wanted to, property manager has seen it himself, you cannot see either tag nor facial recognition as they're driving by.
Why don't they fix it?
Even at night, when they, when your, when your guests, family members drive up, we cannot see the tag numbers for the residents.
But the question was, can that be fixed?
What properties?
And with new cameras, yes, it can be.
Because also my question is like, is Edelweiss? Is Edelweiss, where was the car taken from?
Marseille, behind.
Behind the Marseille back there?
Yes, ma'am.
If you re- relocate, yeah, re-angle the cameras, will that help?
No, sir. We're using residential cameras at the gatehouse.
Is this the problem like in Edelweiss? It's movable and the people are always turning the camera towards the wall?
Which building ma'am?
Edelweiss.
Edelweiss right now has a DVR that does not work. So none of the cameras are recording.
And anywhere in Edelweiss.
Bordeaux, Orleans, no cameras. Marseille and Edelweiss, dead DVRs. Zurich, half-assed system. Grenoble, Saint Moritz, Interlaken, Heidelberg, Nottingham, Yorkshire. Out of those two, out of those buildings, only Yorkshire and Heidelberg have fully functional cameras.
Okay, yeah. Hold on, hold on.
Or do we have a plan, a proposal to upgrade this?
We are working, we are working on that, the problem is that we only have one person on the property that is qualified to do this work and he only does it on Saturdays.
No, I mean.
Roberto.
Roberto?
Somebody to come in, a security to give us a proposal for new cameras and to upgrade our system?
I, I can get the new cameras, I don't need somebody to give me a proposal, we can buy them online for a lot less than these companies will charge us. We are working on it.
Dan's working on that right now as we speak.
We had somebody before that lived here and did work here and it was not proper, so now we have Roberto. We need this and how do we know what's going on?
Are you talking about Mr. Castro?
The gentleman that does, yeah.
Mr. Castro screwed up all the cameras here.
I know.
Everything he left is broken.
Okay, we, we need to move on though, we really do need to move on, so.
One second, one second, this is security, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Number one, when somebody comes in and you can't see what the thing is on the camera, why don't you just write the license plate down number on a piece of paper on who's coming in so that we have the number of who it is?
They do, they walk out of the gatehouse, they walk to the back of the car, they identify what type of car and what the tag number is and come in, put it in the computer system and spit out the pass.
So then they know who it is, then they have to know it is.
We're talking about them leaving, Marcia.
But how do they come in, over the wall?
Yeah, how do they come in there?
Over the wall, well, there's a solution to that. Why don't you put a rock, whatever it is, on top of, I don't know what it's called, on top of the wall that you currently have, put, make it higher.
The walls, what you're talking about is the walls need to be leveled out to where they're taller.
Exactly, so why don't we do that?
It has to go through amendments between property management, the association and the city.
Well, then do it.
That's more money than just putting a simple camera to see who's leaving.
I mean, you know, people can jump over the, I mean, we're single people here, I mean.
Okay, I would, okay, the more practical solution right now is to get those cameras up and operating properly. So, Dan, if you, if you can maybe increase the schedule on the one individual that's doing that, so we can get that done hopefully within a reasonable timeframe, like within the next month or so. Can we, can we accelerate that schedule?
The other thing.
He also does maintenance, so the only other thing you can do is work after hours and you were doing that before and he would start at three o'clock and knock off at five o'clock and those two hours he was accomplishing nothing, that's why we switched him to all day Saturday. Okay, but then can we maybe have him work only on that during, one day during the week as well? I guess, yeah, I mean, as long as George is fine with that because he worked maintenance.
I give you this week, all week for working in Bordeaux, he's talking about it, he's not working for me this week.
Okay, let's keep that up then, let's keep it up where he's, for the next several weeks, just devote himself to the cameras so we can get that out of the way.
The other thing, ladies and gentlemen, just to put your fears to rest about where the security force is going, with the addition of the new golf cart, with the addition of the new personnel, we will have one security rover dedicated to the Bavarian village and one security rover dedicated to the French Quarter. That means that each rover will have six buildings.
What, what about the Indian?
I'm sorry, but those are outliers.
We resent that.
But I appreciate everybody's support, I was going to discuss the option. I don't know what the ramifications of discussing a community watch though. This lovely lady right here helps me out quite a bit, Ms. Gordon helps me out quite a bit and this lovely lady here helps me out quite a bit, so if I have, if I can have more eyes in the buildings and we do have key residents, I call it the Ms. Johnson effect, the, all the little Ms. Johnsons in all of our beloved buildings. If I get eyes and ears on the ground assisting us, we can respond faster and address problems more quicker and efficiently.
Alice, you have your hand up, yes, go ahead.
John, these cameras have been thorn in our side.
Thorn in our side, exactly.
From the very beginning.
Yes, ma'am.
The cameras were installed supposedly, they were not done properly.
No ma'am, not at all.
Then wait, let me finish, then someone came along and they had someone who could do it properly, correct it and do it properly. That process supposedly took place. We find ourselves right back in the same spot with a lot of money spent on cameras that do nothing. We were just as well off, and I'm not suggesting rip them out, but you know, it's, it hasn't been productive at all. If you only have two buildings that have functioning cameras and recorders and you can't even record, this is, this is a farce to say we have cameras. Yeah, sure. Cameras that don't work and recorders that don't record, I mean, come on.
Yeah, I agree.
Get it done properly or, or leave it alone.
So let's have, what's the name of the maintenance guy? Roberto. Ricardo? Roberto. Let's have him just devote himself entirely to that until it's done, okay? Okay.
Well, excuse me, what is he doing?
The camera installation. He's replacing the cameras that need to be replaced and he's installing, in Bordeaux and in Orleans, cameras were never installed. He's in the process of doing Bordeaux now and then he will move over to Orleans. In between, when we discover that a camera is not working, then we're replacing it.
You're replacing it with what?
A new camera.
But the same one that moves around?
They all, they all do that.
There are stationary cameras that somebody can't just go and twist to the wall. Like what, you're gonna put a new camera and that doesn't solve the problem?
There, there are ways, there's ways to make sure nobody can move those cameras.
This is what my rovers are doing. My rovers have five points that address the common areas in every single building. That's part of the track force incident reporting system. If there's an incident, it goes into the system. Dan gets an email and I get an email. They're looking for packages, they're looking for lights, they're looking at the laundry rooms and anything else concerning the building, as well as the parking lot. Everything goes into that smartphone touring system. So we are looking for specific items, if there's a leak, reported, light out, reported, trash on the floor, reported, a piece of furniture left in the hallway, reported. Every single thing, those are addressed. If there's a camera, they're looking at the cameras. I had two cameras reported this past week and it's obviously, it didn't matter because that camera was non-functional, but he still reported it. So if it had been functional, all we would have had to do was take a screwdriver, walk over there, turn it, tighten it and done.
Okay, but the thing is, when you move a camera, you're not catching the person who's going to do something, right?
We, we do have to, we do have to, because it is ten o'clock, I'm sorry, I have to cut it off here, I called it. Thanks, Austin. Next item is the audit proposals, Dan, could you give us a really brief rundown of this one, as fast as possible? Okay. Okay, we, we got the proposal from the same company that has been doing our audit for the last couple of years. They want to increase the price by five hundred dollars and they will lock it in for two years. So instead of paying ten thousand six hundred, you'll pay eleven one for the next two years. I had gotten additional approach from other companies.
Uh, I got one from Sharma, they were much more expensive, by about uh three or four thousand dollars. Uh, then a company came along and canvassed me, looking for a business basically called Master and Company. Uh, they gave me a proposal to do the taxes.